The board is back from our recess and we will continue on our agenda. Our technology is back up and we should be back live streaming. So at this time, we will move into the public input portion of our agenda. Vice Chairman Mason, do we have people signed up for public input?
Yes ma'am, we do.
Okay, so as we begin the public input portion of the meeting, we want to thank everyone for coming out, not just the speakers, but the other members of the public who have joined us today. And our speakers will address the board from the speaker's podium at the front of the room and they will begin your remarks by stating your name and address. Speakers are expected to be civil in their language and presentation. Public comment is not intended to require the board to answer any impromptu questions. However, the board, in accordance with our policy, will include a discussion of public input on the agenda, at which time the board can discuss the issues raised in the public comment portion of the meeting. Board of Education is here to listen to those who have signed up and our speakers will be called upon one at a time and we'll have up to five minutes to speak. If you're still speaking when the alarm sounds, please take your seat. The decorum for our public meeting is to be polite and civil and respectful and I ask that your comments to the board be focused, polite, do not include any personal attacks or name-calling, and be directed to the board. Please refrain from applause and other outbursts for the other members of the public with us today and we thank everyone for cooperating with this. So Ms. Mason?
Madam Chair, the first person is Ms. Cleopatra Hargit Lawton. I hope I got it right. Please say it correctly before, I'm sorry to have mispronounced it.
In honor of my family, my whole Hargit family, founded Cove City. I'm sorry. Thank you, Ms. Mason. I accommodate whatever you do. Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for having me. My name is Cleopatra Hargit. I put Bryant in there now because the Bryant side of the family founded Cove City, really I've learned recently. I live at 1706 Carver Street in New Bern, North Carolina. I'm a product of this school system. And I moved back three years ago to save my family's property here in New Bern as well as Cove City. I am the person who initiated with your help the survival of JT Barber School, which is my alma mater. I was a student of Rosa Sue Fields, who was my chemistry teacher there. And my major was chemistry. Good morning, honorable board members and Madam Chair, staff members of the Craven County Schools, citizens and supporters. I present to you, as a result of our previous meeting, our proposal to acquire my alma mater, the historic West Street School property. And I've learned in my research since I spoke with you that New Bern is to be commended. You were the first place ever in the state of North Carolina to establish a school for freed slaves. We need to be proud of ourselves. Without you, the education of freed slaves would not have begun in the state of North Carolina. Together we should honor this history. It's all of our history to secure our future together. That presentation was really a prelude to the title of my proposal, "Together We Stand." Who'd have thought? Usually your public comment comes before you have your break, but I counted posterity that this happened this way here today. I will read part of this, but I have emailed it to all of you. If you did not get a copy, let me know. But also, I supplied a paper copy to you because I take it very seriously and I hope you will too. We all agree that over 246 years of slavery and almost a half million slaves in North Carolina by 1860 has already paid for this property many times over. You gave it to us. It belonged to us. You were the first to give freed slaves property that they could learn to read and write on legally. The 40 acres and a mule promise freed slaves during Reconstruction was taken back. It has also paid this price. The first soul freed slaves of North Carolina were legally offered by the mayor and city of New Bern to actually walk on to learn to read and write. Thanks to the compassion and leadership of General Sherman and General James, who James City is named after, both people of justice and integrity in America for the first time in American history, my freed slave ancestors were able to come to hear historic West Street School and legally learn to read and write their names rather than remain marking their name as X. This is important history to all of us. As was stated in our petition to you, signed by over 600 citizens of New Bern, Craven County, and would you believe they are still submitting petitions to us with signed names? This is how important the citizens of New Bern feel that this property is to our history, our shared history. Not only to us as descendants of slaves, but also to you when you realize that we fought along with you for your freedom, built your cities and historical monuments and kept you alive. If you go back in history, you will find that we helped you to stay alive just as we sterilize ourselves, even as slaves. So that all of us here today can work together to honor all we have accomplished together. Together we stand. That report reflects how we can come together and make New Bern and Craven County schools the best. I've had experience with the school system all over the country. I have wrote PL 94142, the first educational handicap act on the hill so that we all could thrive and find life in this country. Grant us our history. Together we can build. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chairman Mason, our next speaker?
My name is Paul Hill. I live at 914 Crooked Creek Drive here in Dubron. Been here about 18 years and in North Carolina for about 25. It is normal before we can construct a building or a boat or a ship or anything that we put a plan in place. The same approach needs to be taken into consideration when we start to worry about the curriculum of the school system and the necessary tools that we use to implement that. Before I, I'm going to make a couple of recommendations. There's a series of things in the written, in my written handout that talk about my credentials, but I've been in the computer business about 50 years and have been through more projects than most people probably added to on the board. I recommend that before we start making any changes to our computer operation that we take a serious discussion about collecting the necessary requirements and those are educational requirements and our goals that we're trying to accomplish. From that to put together a comprehensive written plan that spells out everything from the point in time of organizing all the way through to an implementation. If we're going to continue to use computers in our curriculum, then we really need to take a hard look at exactly our goals and aspirations plus the necessary software to implement because software represents reality where hardware only represents potential. If, once that's been successfully done, once you've matched your requirements and your goals against the necessary software, only then can you actually pick the necessary hardware. I've personally been through this process many, many times over and I can tell you that this kind of methodical step-by-step process unfortunately is also lengthy, but it's also the only one that really has a chance of success. And if you are interested in success and improving the curriculum and producing a better student, then I recommend this process be implemented. Thank you very much.
Next?
Mrs. Muse, Kelly Muse is next.
Hey everybody, I'm Kelly Muse. I live at 612 Magamore's Lane. So I've been doing some research on McPherson and Jacobson and I've come across several articles where there's some concerns. One had to do with a superintendent that was in Flint, Michigan and then later moved to Iowa. And I will leave all this here for you all, but it said, Milton already had eyes on his next move in 2011. While he was still employed with Springfield, Milton turned up in a search conducted by a firm looking for a new superintendent. The search firm was McPherson and Jacobson, based in Omaha, Nebraska. It goes on to say that one of the board members scolded the representative from McPherson and Jacobson, saying the only vetting done was asking Dr. Milton for his explanation instead of an independent verification. One of Milton's explanations was the same person convicted of child molestation that he had chose to hire. So based on my research, there is some real concerns potentially with your superintendent headhunting firm. It also goes on to say that they made a recommendation to choose Dexter Suggs at a salary of $200,000. It's the medium average salary for teachers in Arkansas. But not long into his tenure, a local blogger found that within the dissertation Suggs had written to earn his PhD, a requirement for the position, there was a whole lot of nearly verbatim copying of someone else's dissertation without attribution. It appears that he got his degree from a diploma mill. So I'm going to leave these for you all. The other thing that I want to talk to you about is your two-by-two daisy chain meetings that you're having, your pre-boards that we never had until our $15,000 a month, if even 29-hour-a-week interim superintendent came on board.
Thank you, Ms. Muse.
No, I'm sorry.
We are not making personal attacks on people or positions in this district today. Thank you.
Well, I'm going to leave these with you all, but you are in violation of open meetings law. So I'm going to leave this with all of you and Mr. Gatchell can discuss it with you.
That's it, Madam Chair? Our agenda calls for a recess, but we've just taken two 20-minute recess breaks and so I'm going to just continue on the agenda unless there's some objection from the board members to not do that. Okay, so the next item is to review the 25, 26 school improvement plans. And I would call on Mr. Jason Griffin at this time. This is an item that requires board action and so I would ask Mr. Griffin to give us information on this.
So good board, good morning, board members, members in attendance and those of you that are watching and listening online. The purpose of this presentation today is to approve all of the school improvement plans to meet the requirements outlined in General Statute 115(c)(105.27). And I'm just going to briefly summarize that general statute. Each school must develop a school improvement plan designed to improve student performance. The plan must be developed by a school improvement team, or some of us like to call the sit team. And that team includes the principal, the assistant principals, instructional personnel, instructional support staff, and teacher assistants. We are also very fortunate at all 26 of our schools that we have parent representation on our teams and the members of the teams must be voted on each year. We ask as a district that the school improvement team be aligned with the district's strategic plan, which right behind Ms. Wagner, we have our four areas. We have successful students, superior systems, committed community, and premier professionals. Our plans must identify strategies for improving student performance on state and local assessments, include measurable goals and timelines, and these goals and timelines are in NC STAR, where we have provided guest access username and passwords for our board members and stakeholders of the public to review the school improvement plans. We ask that school improvement plans be data-driven and based on data analysis of student performance indicators, which I just provided for all the board members, are the 12 key indicators that are provided by the Department of Public Instruction. The plans that we have attached in the assembly item, they must be approved by the school improvement team and now they are here to the board, they're here today for approval. Plans will continue to be updated and revised throughout the school year. School improvement plans typically are revised every two years. However, and they can be amended as often as needed, but here in Craven, we revise our plans each and every year. School improvement teams are required to meet at least two times a month and those meetings and agendas are in NC STAR for your review. We also have at each of our 26 schools, we have a district director who is assigned to attend those school improvement team meetings and also review the agendas and meetings that are in NC STAR. So we've got five different directors who, from CNI, serve on those teams. The school, and we call them school improvement coaches. The school improvement coaches work with the evaluators of the administrators at each school to ensure that the goals of the school improvement plans are being monitored and that those goals are being achieved. Schools can amend their plans anytime and we anticipate that the goals are going to change all throughout the year. What we have typically done in Craven is we have created one-pagers for the public so that you can kind of get a quick synopsis of what the school improvement plans look like. Also, today's presentation of plans falls under General Statute 115(c)(105.33), which addresses legislation regarding schools that are deemed low-performing by the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. The state gives us 30 days for the approval of the plans. So these designations were announced by the State Board of Education on October 1st. So that means as a district, we have 30 days as a local board to approve those plans. After the plans are approved by the school board, schools that are deemed low-performing or, or it could be and/or, have identified subgroups that need to be addressed, they must send out communication to families that outline the next steps to address their low-performing status and subgroups. This letter would need to be sent home to meet the general statute by October 31st, since November 1st is the weekend. And we have to do that in order to satisfy federal and state requirements. Also, there are certain schools, which is on the second page, the second page that I gave the board, is our 10 low-performing schools. And then the third page is the schools in our district that have been identified by the Department of Public Instruction as having subgroups that must be addressed. And those schools, on those two pages, are required to submit their school improvement plan to the Department of Public Instruction by December 1st. They will get feedback from the State Department and then those plans have to be resubmitted again in the spring. There's a window that opens up between March and June. So I want to take just a few minutes and talk through JT Barber's plan that is one of 26. So you see the identifiable information of the principal, Dr. Wallace, Ms. Kim Scott, who the assistant principal, then you've got their school improvement goals. We asked that each school have four goals and then in parentheses, you see some letters and numbers. Those are the key indicators that are provided to us by the Department of Public Instruction. So for example, when JT Barber says that they are going to reduce the number of major office referrals and employ effective classroom management and reinforce classroom rules, they have attacked- they have attached that to two key indicators. A107, which states, and that's the first page I gave you, "All teachers employ effective classroom management and reinforce classroom rules and procedures by positively teaching them." D102, for any school that is low-performing and/or has identified subgroups, which is the third page that I gave the board members, they must do D102. They, there's, they have to do that one, which is a very important one. Says the LEA or school has aligned resource allocation. That would be money, time, and human resources within each school's instructional priorities. So you can see under premier professionals, where the school improvement team talks about decreasing the teacher turnover rate, they have attached that to two key indicators, D3.04 and D102. Once again, D102 is coming back up. Then they have successful students, where the school improvement team has identified that they want to continue, you know, the things that they have in place at the school to improve student performance. J.T. Barber is one of our schools that improved tremendously throughout last school year's EOG results. Do want to point out the school improvement team. So for the public, each of our one-pagers have the times that each of the schools meet. So meetings are held the first Monday of the month at 3:30 in the media center. It's got all the members of the team. All 26 of our schools are required to have at least one parent representative who attends the meetings on a regular basis. And notice Ms. Betsy Gatchel is their district-assigned school improvement team coach. Ms. Gatchel works very closely with Dr. Wallace to make sure that if they're using restart funds, Title I funds, that they align to their indicators. And then you've got the guest username and password for each school. It's also got the contact information in the event that parents or stakeholders want to reach out to the school for questions. That's kind of the format of all of our school improvement plans. But I would like to pause for any questions regarding the 2025, 26 school improvement plans for Craven County schools.
So, just to give some background here on how we've done this in the past, right? We've done it in different ways. I think there have been some years in the past when principals have actually come to the board and presented them themselves. Isn't that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
If I'm remembering that correctly? And then, in the, in the more recent past, I believe we've had cabinet in this room, and principals have come through and presented their plan.
Yes, ma'am.
To cabinet, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And I assume that's what happened this year?
Yes.
Okay. And, you know, there have been times when, as a board member, I've come and sat in some of those meetings, which is helpful because the final question was always something like, you know, "What can we here at central office or at the board level do to help you accomplish your goals in this plan?" Which I think is a helpful thing for us to hear trends, and is everybody, is every principal saying the same thing? Things of that nature. So I think that's a helpful process for us to at least listen to. But can you give us some background? Obviously, this is, to some extent, this is a state-required, check-the-box activity that we have to do at the school level, looking at last year's results to try and figure out how we're going to improve, which obviously we want to do. But in looking at the actual document, like the full document, which I honestly had not done before, it looks like those documents are updated every year, and they have been for some time, right?
Yes.
So I saw notes in there going back to like 2022, in some cases, right? So, it's to some extent a living document, but the template that we use for this is provided by some other company in the STAR. Right? And, and so, how long have we been using that template? Do you know, happen to know, how long?
Since I've been in the district since 2018, we've been using it.
Okay.
And pretty much, in schools that are deemed low-performing or have identified subgroups, they are required by the state to use in the STAR.
Okay, so using the template is, that was what I was trying to get to. Using this particular template is a state requirement?
Yes.
Okay. And so I've done some digging on the entity behind it. And I think that that explains the entity behind it, the Academic Development Institute, and their proclivities explain some of the references that we see to various articles that are found within the template.
Right.
Right? Okay. Okay, so that's, that's really all I was trying to, to understand better is exactly where that was coming from. No. And, and obviously, you're saying to me that we have no choice, we must use this template. There's, there's nothing we can do about it.
Right.
Okay. All right. That's all. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Are there questions or comments from, from Mr. Griffin, from other board members?
Yeah.
Ms. Mason, did you?
I appreciate the edits and the time everybody has given. I did look at some of the references. And I now understand this is required by state law to use this template. I, I would like, in the future, because I read some of the templates. And to me, there's a huge workload that's imposed on the principal and the teachers. And I would like to understand that better because, to me, if you're going to do an implementation plan, you should do it for yourself so you can do it. But some of the things, I think the workload is just way too high to accomplish. And in a couple of them, they identified things that has to be done at the district level. The school improvement plan process, and I'm sorry for the speech, will, would help the board in the budget session if we could tie it to specific budget items that are necessary. So when the schools, you know, send them up, we understand, oh, this is for this school improvement plan item on this. I'm not happy with some of the articles that were attached. I mean, I understand the Castle SEL model very well, and that was attached on several of the items. And, you know, I, I think we're moving away from that. So, I, I would like, if, we're at a point where we have to, you know, execute, I get that. But since we're doing it all along the line, Mr. Stout, I would like it if we could work on updating some of the information because the articles really imply a lot of work by your staff. And I'm not sure we have the time for the people to do all the work that's been identified. And I'm not sure we can tie it to the budget in the current form.
Thank you, Ms. Mason. Is there any, are there any other comments from board members? If, Mr. Kirkman?
Mr. Griffin, thank you very much for the information. And we know it's, having been a part of that, it's a long process, and it takes a lot of work and a lot of hours outside of the normal eight to three, so to speak. But with that being said, it just comes back to this, what do you need from us?
You know, I, I would say in terms of what we need as a district, what the schools need is just continued support. You know, I appreciate all the research and stuff that board members and stuff have done on these plans because all it does is help make us better as a school district. So I would just say continued support.
Thank you. And I also appreciate the work of 26 school improvement teams, which are made up of more than half a dozen members representing the school, the community, parents, families. I know if you put seven members of a board or 1,200 employees of a school district and gave them the same document, we'd come back with all kinds of, I'd write it this way, or I would write it that way, or I'd, those kinds of things. And that's all important. But we really want our schools to focus on the improvements that we believe our principals and these school improvement teams know firsthand at the building level, those things that are important to make those schools successful. And that's not just our low-performing schools, it's all of our schools. And so, I appreciate the work of the school improvement teams. And for the benefit of the public, our board is sitting up here looking at these printed copies of all the school improvement plans. They're all available online. And every school improvement plan has the guest username and password that Mr. Griffin referenced because members of the public are free to go and look even in more detail than the one-pagers that we have here. I also like the one-pagers. So, if there is, or no other questions for Mr. Griffin, I would entertain a motion to approve the school improvement plans as presented. So moved. I have a motion from Ms. Dacey to, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Mr. Kirkman. Is there any discussion? Hearing non, Mr. Stout, would you please take a roll call vote?
Ms. Jennifer Dacey?
Yes.
Ms. Amy Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Darlene Gibbs?
Yes.
Mr. Lee Kirkman?
Yes.
Ms. Laura Kidzinger?
Yes.
Ms. Patty Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Laurie Spease?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Passes.
Fixed agenda item is in reference to the Bridgeston property. And I would call up Dr. Blunt at this time to give us an update on that.
Good morning, members of the board. I come to you this morning requesting approval of the acceptance of the highest qualified bid, upset bid, on the old Bridgeston property in the amount of $321,350 to Bridgeston Harbor Marina.
Thank you. Mr. Gatchel, is there any specific that we need to reference in taking action on this?
No, before you take action, I'd like to have a brief moment.
Okay. So, thank you, Dr. Blunt. We will not take action on this right now, as our legal counsel says that they need to consult with us in closed session. But we will come back to this item. Yes, Ms. Dacey?
I'd like to ask one question that does not relate to the legal process of, of Dr. Blunt, if I could. I had this question from a member of the public, and I'd like to have it clarified before we take action. So, could you, and, and I don't need an answer right now, but once, assuming the board takes the action, I expect that it will, and this is finalized, the proceeds from this sale will go into which account?
They will go back into capital.
Capital account, right? Okay. All right. I just wanted to have that on the record. Thank you.
The next item up is related to the first read on several policies. These are all policy updates that have been passed on to us from the North Carolina School Boards Association. And I would, if we could pull up the first one. First policy is 13104002, related to parental involvement. And... Believe it's just updating some legal references at the bottom. If you could scroll that. And all board members have had preview and access to these policies before we are here today. So, but this is the time for us to have any discussion or questions or concerns around the policies that are in first read? Is there a particular, Ms. Mason, do you have something?
I make a motion that we vote on these as a block. And the discussion is on individual ones, and if there is an individual complaint, we could pull that out. But in the interest of time, I would make a motion that we consider these as a block because we all have reviewed them in detail.
Yes, Mr. Gatchel. So there's a motion to review the first read policies as a block of policies and approve. Is there, is there a second to do that?
Second.
A second from Ms. Gibbs to do that? Is there any discussion on the policies that are contained in that first read block of policies today? Yes, Ms. Dacey?
I, I don't have any discussion with regard to the policies. I think the updates are completely expected and in line with statutory changes. My only point is that our own policy provides for a first and second read of policies, and I don't see that there's any urgency with regard to these updates. So why would we not just go through our normal process and follow our own policy with regard to the updates?
So is there any additional discussion on the policies that are currently considered in first read? And if not, I would entertain a motion to move those policies into second read and to the consent agenda for Thursday evening. So we have a motion on the floor to, to review and approve all the first read as a block. We have a second for that. No additional discussion, hearing no additional discussion. All those in favor, please signify by the raising of your right hand. That's four and three. Did you get that? All those opposed, please signify by the raising of your right hand. That's three. So, the motion carries that we would review these as a block of first read policies. Is there discussion or questions about the first read policies? I would entertain a motion to move those policies from first read into second read and to the consent agenda for Thursday evening's regular board meeting. Yes, Mr. Gatchel? They don't need to go into, okay. Okay. Yes. Yeah.
I said, I think she was confused that she thought you were bundling them to go into a second read instead of being approved right now.
Right.
Yeah, I, I'm aware of that. I was just letting you know that she wasn't understanding that.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. We are...
So, yeah.
Yes, Ms. Mason?
Mr. Gatchel, the motion was just to approve them to go to second read, so... Well, can I make a motion to reconsider what we just did? Because I stated it wrong, apparently. And I have no problem. I'm human, I'm allowed to be wrong. I've fallen down learning to walk. Can we have these policies as a group for first read only? And then consider moving them to second read?
Madam Chair, if I may, Mr. Gatchel, we can, she can move to reconsider the motion because she was on the prevailing side. And so therefore... And so therefore it can come back up provided she has a second, and then it does require two-thirds majority vote on that. Then it goes back to the discussion of the original motion.
Yes, sir, I made a motion to approve these as first read only approval.
Let's, let's get our procedural stuff right. Action. Have a procedural motion. Consider.
Okay, I make a motion to reconsider the last motion procedurally. Or however I'm supposed to say it.
You hit the, you hit the right word.
Second.
Ms. Davis? Kit, the motion for us, Mr. Gatchell?
We're discussing the motion that was perceived, previously made, or the new motion I'm trying to...
The old, we have to, we have to undo what was done.
I'm just clarifying which one.
Yeah.
After this, I'm clarifying. Yes, that is correct.
Made, um, and we have a second from Ms. Davis. And is there any discussion? Mr. Stout, would you please take a roll call vote? Um, okay, Ms. Kit singer does have something for discussion?
I would just ask that if there's any confusion before we take a vote on any motion, speak up, please, um, because there, quite, quite too often, it seems that from my perspective, we are having to rescind motions or re-vote on motions because there is a severe misunderstanding, um, from members of the board. And to prevent this from happening, if you are unsure of what you're voting on, just speak up. It, it's as simple as that.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Stout, would you please take a roll call vote?
Ms. Jennifer Dacey?
Yes.
Ms. Amy Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Darlene Gibbs?
Yes.
Mr. Lee Kirkman?
Yes.
Ms. Laura Kit singer?
Yes.
Ms. Patty Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Royce Spees?
Yes.
Then carries, and, um, I, I don't know if I am hearing to entertain a motion that we would like to, um, consider the policies that are in first read right now, um, to put them, to approve them and send them to second read and to the consent agenda. Yes, Mr. Gatchell, you look like you have some...
So, um, I want to be careful with language. So, current process. Automatic. Second. Not expedited. So, not actioned. That happened. Happened. Idea of policy. Distinct. No action is taken. Then. Intended by your policy. Second policy. Second. Consent. Expedited. Me burdened. West. From. Separate. Specific. Don't have to do anything. For action. Make happen, but I think that happened.
So, we do not need to take action on the first read. And by not taking action on the first read, the policies move to second read and to the consent agenda. I just want to clarify that for board members and public. Okay? Any other...
Madam Chair, I'm so sorry for messing this up.
Is there, it, is it, yes, Ms. Dacey?
For the, for the sake of clarification, I will say that last month we took action to approve policy changes on an expedited basis because we needed to comply with state statute. That does happen from time to time because sometimes the legislature will do things during the summer and they'll say, "You need to make a policy change, you know, effective September one," or whatever the case may be. So, that requires us to take action outside of the normal policy process. So perhaps that is what Ms. Mason was thinking, but there is no urgency with regard to these policy changes. So I just want to clarify that.
That the other circumstance sometimes happens that are changes that are minor. Changes hurting. Fire substance. Changes. As fire. Termin. Further. Waste of time. Simply says thou shalt do this. Have it. Out of the language. Incorporated policy. The two. No choice. Urgent.
Hearing no other com, yes, Mr. Kirkman? I was going to say, hearing no other comments, these items on first read will move to, um, second read and the consent agenda for Thursday night, but...
If I may, and not to, not to add to the confusion or whatever and correcting, you know, Mr. Gatchell on this, but, um, we technically have a main motion on the floor because we reconsidered her motion or the vote on that motion. And so that brings us back to the discussion of that original motion, which in order to let it die, we should vote no on that.
I make a motion to undo the previous motion. Kill it.
To. To. It was a settled matter. Un. Kirk. Settled.
Do we have a motion to?
The motion is pending. That is, approve all of this.
That's right, okay.
Appropriate roll call vote. I'm a magic everybody's.
Do we need a second to that motion?
He does, he is not making a motion, simply acknowledging.
Acknowledging that it's still on the table, right? And to get it removed from the table, what, um...
Madam, we just need to vote, yea or nay, and we're voting again on Ms. Mason's motion.
Okay.
Which from discussion would lead us to believe that we would all vote in the negative of that, which would then shift everything to the next meeting. So we, it would kill everything we've talked about and, and everything in regards to that.
Okay. It would shift it to the next month's meeting.
Correct.
Correct.
And we need, we need to take a vote on that, so... Mr. Stout, would you please take a roll call vote?
Ms. Jennifer Dacey?
No.
Ms. Amy Davis?
No.
Ms. Darlene Gibbs?
No.
Mr. Lee Kirkman?
No.
Ms. Laura Kit singer?
No.
Ms. Patty Mason?
No.
Ms. Royce Spees?
No. Thank you. Okay.
So we're on to the next agenda item. Um, and the next agenda item is, um, in the chairman's report to have a discussion of public input. So, I would open it up to the board members to see if they have any, um, feedback or input that they want to give related to the public input that we received today. Um, yes, Ms. Kit singer?
Um, first, thank you to those who came out to speak with us. Um, they're kind of our regulars. And I, I'm not, uh, Mr. Hill mentioned a possible switch from iPads to Chromebooks. I am unaware of that discussion. I know that last year we had some discussion about that, um, upon the renewal lease for Apple. Is there something that I'm missing that I'm unaware of? Okay. So, there's that. Um, Ms. Muse, and she mentioned our two-by-twos, and I, um, believe that some of our staff and the board members know that I am not a fan of those. Um, I believe, and I'm, this is just going to be my opinion, obviously, my response to any of it. Um, it's never really been my opinion that it's a violation of open meetings law, but now that she's mentioned it and I've read some of the documents that she brought out, I mean, it's kind of hard to ignore that. Um, so I just want to read a couple of these things that I've highlighted. Um, and then I'll make comments, um, because I have a pretty strong opinion of these two-by-twos. I, I've attended one, um, and I have not attended any since for several reasons, due to working full-time and not being able to. And also, I, I don't find them to be productive because the information shared in them is not shared in our public meetings, and I don't find that to be transparent, which every member of this board ran on. First quote, "To preserve the practice of private briefings, the agency places an artificial wall around members who attend," Hardesty wrote. "The agency's practice actually inhibits discussions between the members. It has the effect of dividing them into small groups, thus cutting off the very dialogue our high court has permitted." I can agree with that. Um, there seems to be a lot of information shared in these two-by-twos and conversations had between members of the board that we do not get to have, that I am used to having for the last three years during our public meetings. That's all from that one. This one says, "Government transparency is a public good. There are some exceptions, such as certain personnel records, but in general, citizens have a right to the information their government possesses. Transparency helps citizens better understand why government officials make their decisions and hold them accountable for their actions. More transparent governments govern better." To that comment, I will say, "Our public meetings have, um, progressively become shorter and less informational. We receive less, um, presentations from our staff. Um, and to that extent, our public is receiving less information." Um, much of the information that is shared from the two-by-twos is typically and historically presented to us, and I see no reason why it shouldn't be and can't be. Um, and what just occurred here was inefficient governing, inefficient management of our meeting. Um, and I think if we gave ourselves the opportunity to have longer, more productive, more informational meetings, we wouldn't run into situations such as this. I mean, I've been doing this for three years. The five of you have been doing this for ten months. Um, we should know by now that first read policies automatically go to the consent agenda. Um, and, and that's not a, a dig on anybody in particular. Um, that's just me pointing out that we should know by now how our meetings run, and if we had consistent meetings where, you know, I'm, I'm not coming in here on the third Tuesday of every month and looking at the agenda and being, why, and thinking to myself, "Why are we even here? What information is even on here that is actually conducting any business of the board besides approving some policies?" Next, "Local governments try to circumvent open meetings law" is the, the heading of this paragraph. Here's an example, "The Board of Commissioners of the town of Huntersville in northern Mecklenburg County works around the open meetings law by conducting non-majority agenda review meetings, also called three-on-three meetings, among the six commissioners. On the day of every board meeting, three commissioners meet in the morning, the others meet in the afternoon to discuss the agenda for the official meeting later that day. They have been holding three-on-threes for over a decade. They are regular, planned and organized gatherings in which all commissioners review the agenda for the official meeting later that day and make plans about that, that agenda. They amount to a fragmented asynchronous meeting of the full body." That is exactly what we've been doing for the last few months. Our two-by-twos are regular asynchronous meetings of our full body. That inhibits us from having discussion amongst each other. I don't know who chooses the pairings of the two-by-twos. Um, you know, and, and I think that since we've been on this board together, there have been a lot of conversations and comments made to each other in our group texts. A reminder of, "Hey, can't have that conversation." That creates a quorum, that's governing, um, that's creating, that's conducting business. Um, and so I think it's, it's kind of rich for us to keep practicing this way. Um, and it's, quite honestly, it's very disheartening. And it, it's hard to continue showing up when there's nothing happening on the agenda. There's a lot of agenda request items, um, that continue to be requested over and over again, and then we look at what's, what's on the agenda, and there's nothing there. There's nothing there. The public knows nothing. We know nothing. Um, there's no communication whatsoever. Um, so, to that end, thank you, Ms. Muse, for bringing this up and giving me a segue to bring this up, um, in my comments, because I was actually just going to mention it in my comments, but rather I get to do it earlier in the discussion of public input. Um, so, yeah, I don't know that the public knew that we were having these two-by-two meetings, but now they certainly do. Um, and for anyone else, there have been comments made to me about why our, our agendas have been so scarce or sparse, rather, um, but this is why, so... That's my opinion on that. Thank you.
Are comments from board members? Yes, Ms. Dacey?
Um, so, I, uh, I, uh, share many of those concerns. I will also say with regard to Mr. Hill's comments, um, I'm, I'm unaware of discussions about changes in technology, although I think that it would be important to make any such changes or begin studying any changes well in advance of the need to purchase or enter into an additional lease, uh, with any, uh, technology company. I have, as I've stated before, grave concerns about the continued use of technology and, and the amount that we use it for children, particularly in our lower grades, and I think that that's something the district needs to carefully consider uh, before we make additional purchases, um, of, of any product, quite frankly. Um, the, the data is, is there, uh, and it's very clear that to a large extent, um, technology has been more of a hindrance to this generation of young people than it has to, uh, help, particularly in regards to their mental health. And so I think that we have to look very seriously about, uh, that availability, particularly among our, our youngest learners. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the board? Yes, Ms. Mason?
Um, I, I would like to say first, I think we should entertain Ms. Lawton's proposal. I would like to say first, I think we should entertain Ms. Lawton's proposal because history is important. And history needs to include the good, the bad, and the ugly because that's the only way we learn is community. And I get legally, we need to sell the property. But there's also, you know, community goodwill that is advantageous as well. As for the Mr. Hill, I believe he's right. The first rollout of the computers in this county and this district was not done well. It just was not done well. I, you know, I retired as an engineer, systems engineer of 32 years. And he's absolutely right. We need to have the requirements. And for the last Apple lease review, I heard the same thing Mr. Hill did, where we were talking about Apple versus Chromebook versus Dell. And, you know, if we don't review the software we want, we're not going to get what we want. For example, the iPads are not well-powered to do everything we want. If you want to do Zoom and you want to do an application in the Zoom, they don't have the power to do it, if you look at it technically. And obviously, I have. So I think the discussion needs to be done. What do we want to accomplish with the computer? And what is the return on our investment that the district is looking for? And that's a hard discussion to have, very hard to have. And it's a time-consuming discussion to have. And I think we need to consider Mr. Hill's input. As far as the two by twos, I can see both sides. I'm not exactly a fan because sometimes it changes when it gets to mine. And I'm always in catch-up mode, but, you know, that may be due to my inability to time manage, maybe. But I am adamant that everything that is discussed in a two by two needs to be discussed in the public forum, which is why I made the earlier motion to amend the agenda to talk about the CTE and the discipline numbers. We do, we did all run on transparency, and I stand on that. And I believe everything we talk about does need to be public record.
Sarah, yes, Ms. Gibbs?
I'd just like to say on the point of the two by twos, I've been dumbfounded ever since I've been on this board of how we're supposed to do the business of the board. In our policy, it states that we could have work groups or committees, and we've been told those don't work. So we've tried the two by twos, and those aren't working for everyone. So how do we do the business of the board? Is my question.
Yes, Ms. Mason?
Having attended a couple of the legal classes that the National School Board Agency has, and having read a lot of what Ms. Muse put forward, we are kind of hindered because we are public servants. We answer to the public. However, there is an app, and I've been using it. We can send, as long as it's asynchronous communication, emails of thought, not decision. We can communicate through email and just put the positions on that are going to come up in the public. But nothing should be done in email that is not done in the public. Nothing. And we are accountable to the people that voted us in. And we are accountable to the entire district as well to do the best for each and every student. And that requires making hard topics public. And that requires squirming in our seats and discussing the things publicly. But I believe that is how we need to work as a board and how we unite ourselves as a board, is to respect each other and talk about it in public. And when I send my emails, that's public record. I know that. And I expect it to be public record. So I just think we go there.
So I would say in response to Ms. Mason's comments, with which I agree largely, I think that the answer to how to govern is to talk more, is more communication. The answer is always more communication, not less. And it cannot be done in an ordered way. It has to be done in a way that allows everybody to engage in the free flow of information. And we've got to figure out a way to facilitate that. I don't think the two by twos are doing it. And I don't think email is the answer. There has to be more communication by and among this board in order to move the board forward. That's the only answer. And I think in the interim, what I would say, while we're still searching for a new leader, the business of this district goes on. And that's what staff are looking to us to do. We have to talk about the real problems that are happening, whether it's discipline data or what's happening with CTE, whatever the case is. If there are issues that are coming to the forefront and folks are bringing them to this board, we have to talk about them. That is on us to do. So that's my answer, though. More communication.
Ms. Kitzinger was first, so I'm going to get in. Ms. Kitzinger?
First, Ms. Daisy's point of talking about the issues that come up, that goes to Ms. Watson's point of how do you get, how do you address making teachers comfortable and want to come to work and addressing mental health and whatnot? That is by not pushing things under the rug and not pretending things aren't happening. You talk. You don't be afraid to say the ugly things. You don't be afraid to address the ugly things. And that can start here. Another thing is, so historically, you know, I have here, something I guess that was talked about in two by twos was the discipline data that we're asking to talk about today. I remember, you know, I've only been on this board for three years. But historically, annually, we talk about this in depth. It is presented to us, and we have discussion amongst ourselves. And we ask in-depth questions. Okay, well, is this due to iPads? Is it due to cell phones? And in which area of the school? I mean, we have conversation about it, and this is not being allowed to happen for whatever reason. I don't know. The annual health report, where was that? You know, it was what, four pages, when historically it's 30 or 40? That needs to be talked about. I don't understand what is happening, and it is very disheartening. And it makes me feel very defeated. Why are we here? Why are we doing what we're doing? You know, I don't understand. I don't understand. And quite frankly, it's infuriating. How can we do what is best for the students and the staff if our hands are tied? And who is tying our hands? Because we are the ones who should be tying someone's hands. The seven of us. Not that I want to tie anyone's hands, but why are we allowing anyone to tie our hands? We are in charge, and we're not acting like it. And I'm not trying to be mean. I'm just saying, why are we not doing anything? That's all. No, one more thing. Sorry. I remember over the last three years that I've been on the board, many, many calls from the public, even from some members on this board now, calls for transparency, saying that we were going to close session far too often. Now you know why we go into closed session and comments since you've been on the board. Okay, yeah, maybe you weren't going into closed session for no reason. But now, I mean, it's changed. It has changed, and it shouldn't have. I mean, look at our meetings for the last three years. Look at them versus now. It's completely different. Yeah, the hours might have taken longer, and now we're here for just a couple of hours. But that doesn't matter. We are here to do a job. We decided to do this. Nobody is forcing any of us to be here. We chose to be here. All of us are choosing to be here. We can dedicate the time and do the work. That's all.
Ms. Mason, did you have additional comments?
Yeah. I am sharing the concern that we need to talk more. I'm sharing it that we need to be in public. I am not in agreement that it is any one person. It is each one of us. Each one of us is one-seventh of the board. Each of us is one-seventh of the leadership. Each of us must be a leader, and we must come together. And so each of us are failing to include me. You know, today, I really messed it up on the Robert Schurles of order. Okay, so that's okay. It happens. We learn. We move forward. I think we need to figure out how to communicate. I will say, one of my fear about communicating publicly, and I will say it, is we have a budget problem. And during the budget discussions, I heard the staff loud and clear that we are talking about people, we're talking about people, not numbers, not dollars. And there's people behind it. I heard that. So if we could get input about how to have those hard discussions on prioritization of what we need to get the budget back in gear, that would be useful. And that would help because we don't want to offend anybody. We don't want to do it. So yes, some of us are new to public life. Yes, some of us are learning our way. And we need your help as well because we need to have those hard discussions. Our budget is out of whack. We need to find over $5 million in it. Mr. Stout has done an excellent job, and he's identified at least 1.5 already of that $5 million. So, you know, it's a hard thing to do. And everybody needs to be on board. Everybody needs to have the same vision. And we need your help because we're not perfect. And we're still finding our ways. And we need the help. We ran to serve you. We ran to be servants. So servants need input from their bosses. And that's what we're asking for, or what I'm asking for as well on some of the hard discussions to include the budget. And I just think everything that we talk about needs to go into the public domain. The discipline numbers, the reason I wanted those in the public domain, is there's some good news stories in there. I mean, the high schools have been working on it, and there's good news there. And I think that's something that should be applied. For the CTE program, I love CTE. I think it's the best program going. And I think we need to display that, and we need to promote it. And I'm off my side.
Any other comments from the board members?
I have a few. First of all, one of my mantras is to trust but verify. And so I have to say, I also did not realize that there were discussions going on about the board making changes to computer equipment. So I don't know where that is coming from. Also, I just would like to let the public know that the debacle that happened in Iowa was using a firm called JG Consulting. And this is the stuff you have to be careful with, with AI and Google. So trust but verify. And I just, I appreciate the work of this board. And I appreciate the work of this board as we are trying to navigate five brand-new members and what's the best way for us to work and get work done. And it is true that our employees in our school district, they look to us for oversight, but they don't look to us for daily supervision and direction in their jobs. And I feel very strongly that as a board, we have to trust the talent that we have employed in our school district. And we hold the superintendent accountable for those things. We hold the schools accountable for those things. But that, and we do our part to be transparent. And I hear the feedback on the two by twos. I appreciate that. So the two by twos are some small group meetings that we have changed up a little bit to have preliminary to this, to our work session and our regular board meeting so that board members could have additional information. Personally, I have liked them because we have gotten more information to help us in decision-making than we were getting, I was getting in those first four months on the board. So I have appreciated that. But I hear loud and clear the different feedback on those small groups. And so I think this board, it's my belief that all seven members of this board do their part to try to be transparent and try to stay connected with the members of the public. But we were elected to office to hold the school district accountable, but not to be the daily supervisors of everything that goes on in this. In fact, out of seven board members, I think we only have one formal educator on the board. So we trust the work that's being done. And when the work isn't being done, or we don't trust that it's being done, then we have different conversations and accountability conversations with our leadership. And I appreciate the work going on from the building level to central office all over the district. And I thank you for your work, and I thank you for your expertise. Yeah, Ms. Mason, did you have something?
I'd like to say what Ms. Speaks just said is very important. There's a chain of command that needs to be followed. The chain of command works up and works down. And we are not responsible for the day-to-day management of the school. And we should not jump in when we hear a problem. We should guide everybody to use the chain of command, just like we do for the public. And the chain of command works up and down, and it's very important to adhere to that and not to have surprises. So I agree with that.
I do want to give a quick update on the superintendent search, which I mentioned earlier, but for the benefit of the public again. Our application process closes tomorrow. And after that, Jacobson and McPherson will provide, they will be vetting the applications for us and bringing recommended candidates to us. And we expect to have some recommended candidates and to move on to that next step, that first week in November. I do want to remind again, just for the benefit of the public, that we, this board decided to make that superintendent search a closed search, which means we are not purposely keeping information from the public by not publishing a list of however many candidates that we have. We just did that respectfully. Out of those people applying, it's like any other profession or job, right? So more to come on that. I think this board is excited to hear how many applicants and interested folks we have tomorrow. So, and we did amend the agenda to add the discipline data at the beginning, or we amended the agenda to add the discipline data. And I don't know, do we need to take a break to do that, or is that available now? We can do it now? Okay, so we're going to move into that. Looks like Dr. Bautwell is going to give us an update here.
I am cer, good morning. I am certainly going to attempt to give you an update. I believe the information that you are looking for was shared about a month ago via two by twos. And so I don't know if it would be beneficial to, not sure if it needs to be up on the screen or how we want to handle that. But essentially, some of this information that was requested of our department, and I believe Student Services, so I certainly would refer to Dr. Monroe if there's any questions he might have as well. But essentially, the first part of that document was a couple of pages long, and it looked at the 24, 25 discipline incidents overall as a school district. And so page one of that document provided the full encompassing how many incidents occurred in the district for the 24, 25 school year. So we provided district-wide, and then we broke down the number of infractions by school. Now certainly, it's important to note that you're somewhat comparing apples to oranges here because if we see one school that has a significant amount of referrals, but they also have the highest population in the district in comparison to another perhaps elementary school that holds only a very small percentage in comparison. So that was the first part of that. The next page of that two-pager broke down and then started comparing just by grade span. So the first graph would have given number of infractions by elementary school. And then again, we are still looking at some varying numbers in ADM enrollment there. The second graph would have given our middle school numbers, and then of course, looking at our high schools. That does include our two early colleges. And so we are still kind of in that range where you might see one school with a significant number with a significant number of infractions in comparison to another school with much lower enrollment. The only school not, not represented on these, um, this particular PDF would have been Cravel and Virtual Academy. So the data on this would represent 25 of our 26 schools, and that is because they did not have any infractions. They had minor incidents, but not major incidents, um, for the 24, 25 school year. Are there any questions about that document in particular? Okay. The next document that we provided, um, was looking at a school, looking at each of the schools one by one. And so this document was, I believe, about 25 pages long. And so this would give you the data for Bangert, the data for Arthur W. Edwards. And so the, Arthur W. Edwards, excuse me. So this gave you a much more comprehensive look of that school in particular, which is a much more, um, appropriate way to look at it and not comparing a school against another. So on those particular PDFs, we gave you the top infractions for that school and then gave you a corresponding pie graph to kind of show you how that school ended up for infractions. So just as a heads up on our infractions, the way we gathered that data for you will look a little bit different this year. Last year, we continued to use Educator's Handbook for one final year. And so when we gathered this data for you, we took all of the data out of Educator's Handbook. We also took any data that was uploaded into Infinite Campus, just to be sure. Now, everything should have gone in from Educator's Handbook into Infinite Campus, but just to be sure that we were giving you the most accurate data. We pulled everything from Infinite Campus as well, compared the two, removed any duplicates. And so this year, we will pull exclusively from Infinite Campus. And so I am happy to entertain, and I think I saw, um, Dr. Monroe, I'm happy to entertain any questions you might have regarding discipline.
Are there questions or comments from the board? Ms. Mason? Ms. Stacy?
Thanks for pinch hitting on this, Dr. Boutwell. I know Ms. Mason had some things she wanted to celebrate, I think, um, in terms of the data at some of the high schools in particular. But I think what is interesting, and I think what would be, um, worth pointing out is the, the variety of infractions that we're talking about once we get to the high school level. Where we have, I'm looking at Havelock, for instance, where we have, you know, cutting class among the top five infractions at 9.3%, but excessive tardiness at 29.7%. The combined other is 41%, so I don't know what that is. It's obviously lots of things, but cutting class, insubordination, inappropriate behavior, and skipping school. So you still have a lot of either absences or tardiness that you're dealing with.
If I may, I did take the liberty just a moment ago when, um, this was added to the agenda just to kind of do a deep dive one more time to make sure I could, um, do some highlights just for the good of, of the board and the public. So one of the things that kind of comes out of the secondary data is not necessarily a reflection of, of high, I don't want to say crimes, but high offenses. Really, the, the larger issue at our secondary schools, which would be elementary, excuse me, middle school and high school, is essentially chronic avoidance, right? So the skipping tardies, that's the issues we're seeing for them. For elementary patterns, we're seeing, um, more, um, like developmental issues, perhaps bus misbehavior or how to classroom, um, behavior. So, you know, just learning to get through my day in the most productive way. Overall, infractions appear to be stable among schools when normalized for enrollment. So we don't currently see a school that is seeing an incredible amount of infractions in comparison to their ADM. So that does appear to be stabilized. Early colleges and our virtual platforms maintain strong conduct indicators. So we can see that their infractions are considerably lower in comparison to our more traditional schools. And then several elementary schools, Bendy Quinn, AWE, and there's some others, show comparatively low incident numbers in comparison to others. So some of the things that we, um, might want to, as a district, look at, and already are, quite frankly, looking at as a district, are, um, you know, subgroup analysis. Do we have particular subgroups that are having higher incident rates in comparison to others? And, and also looking at our EC 504 representation, are we seeing a higher number of infractions with regard to students, um, who fall in those particular subgroup areas? And certainly, that's something myself and other departments would continue to work on. We are noticing that when we look at these numbers, we're looking at infraction numbers. We're not looking at student numbers. And so for the good of public, that's also important to note. And so really, when you start seeing numbers, oftentimes, those numbers can be, um, associated to chronic students, meaning I'm a student and I have perhaps 10 or 15 incidents attached to me. So I'm not 15 different kids. I'm one or two kids who continue to have, perhaps have issues. And those children are running through the MTSS process. They are coming through Student Services and various supports are being given to them. And certainly, that then leads into perhaps alternative placement, which is, you know, something that Dr. Monroe and other departments are working through. We are seeing some, so I wanted to talk about like temporal and attendance correlation. So for example, are we seeing less fighting and less aggressive behavior? But as a result, we might see more skipping in school and we might, because they're in school, right? They're not being sent out of school, but we might see more in-school things happening versus the things that were getting them sent out of school. And so we did see that a little bit in our 24, 25 data. So, um, in response to Ms. Mason, that is, that is in my opinion, we don't want to see those numbers increase, but that's a plus, right? We would rather them be in school. We want them to, to do well, um, at all times. But if the difference is, is having to work through some infractions in school versus having to work through some infractions outside of school, I'll take the first, all day long. Um, and then of course, we're continuing to work through staffing and just environmental factors. Are we seeing some of these infractions in a class where there is a substitute, right? So there's a lot of various things that, that contribute to this data.
We collect the data. Where does the data go and how do we operate on the data?
Okay. So I, so the, the teachers will use Infinite Campus' behavior management platform. And so they all have access to enter that information directly into the system. Now they make a decision in, at their level, at their autonomy to, is this a minor infraction and one that I would like to handle in my classroom? Or is this one that I would like to be sent to the office to be used as what is a major infraction? Now, as a district, we do have a behavior matrix on what should happen with first offense, second offense, and so on. Is this a level one, two, or three offense? Once it goes to the major behavior management portal, it then will push to all school administrators in that building. And then they decide on how that's processed. So it could be that I take certain members of the alphabet. It could be that I take, um, all of a certain grade level. They, they decide that at the school. We do not decide that at the district level. But at that point, the, the principal, or the assistant principal, or the administrative intern, whoever does it, is going to conduct and, and give due process to that child, right? And make sure they invest the, investigate the issue. Once they do that, they put the, what is then the action on the incident. So what am I going to do? Is this going to be an administrative conference? Is this going to be one day of ISS? Am I going to have to send the student home over this? And once they process that in the system, that then pushes out to the teacher to let them know that the incident has been handled. Oftentimes, it will then push out into the parent portal so parents can receive that information. Now certainly, if it is a larger concern, your administrative team is going to call families ahead of time before it ever pushes into that portal. We are not going to be sitting at work and get a call that my child's been suspended for 10 days and we didn't have any prior knowledge of it, right? They're going to get that call ahead of time. And so within Infinite Campus, that then generates a series of reports. All of that data goes into the Beh- Behavior Management System. And we have a series of reports that we can pull. So we can pull, you know, give me the behavior incidents for just this school, or give me the behavior managements for the entire district, and I'd like to compare it in the way that I presented, um, in this PDF. But everything is housed in Infinite Campus, including now minor incidents. They are, there is a platform for them, for teachers to be able to go in and plug in minor infractions. That's particularly helpful for our teachers who don't necessarily want to take it to the next level, but I'm getting ready to have a parent-teacher conference. And I'd like to be able to pull that up and say to the family, we, you know, we've had a couple of issues where they've, they've had an outburst in class. I have not referred that, but could we just work on that together? So they, they put all of that now in the Infinite Campus platform.
Thank you. You gave me exactly what I was hoping the public could hear, is that the parents are hearing about it from minor before, before it gets to be major, and they are involved every step of the way.
Sure. We are also required to put that on our school report cards, right? So there's also conduct that goes out on those reports as well, to know how children are doing.
Thank you, Dr. Boutwell. Are there other questions or comments from members of the board? I also would just say that, um, the discipline data that we've just reviewed historically, it was also available on the DPI website. So there's no, uh, no, you know, attempt to keep that hidden from anybody. If you love data, you can go to the DPI website. I noticed the 24, 25, um, stats weren't up there yet, but I'm sure they will be. And, um, so.
I'm going to give this to Dr. Monroe. He can explain that.
Okay. Dr. Monroe, how are you today?
I'm doing well. And, uh, because Student Services, we cross over so many places. I heard the word pinch hit. We just have to do that because the data is housed in Infinite Campus. I don't have access to that. But when the reports are ready, they send me the notice, so I have to send it to them to go, I need you to pull this particular report down. So the issue last year with us being a pilot district with Infinite Campus is a lot of the coding was incorrect. It was coding that students were, uh, that may have had a weapon and it was a gun. Well, it wasn't a gun. They had to go back in and change certain codes. So, uh, instead of June 30th, when, uh, we would normally submit our data, uh, to the state, we, that was extended. So on August 15th, I sent to the principal, this is the last time that you can, that, the last pool that the state had to go in and make correction. Sometimes the errors and corrections are that they use, um, assault when it was probably just a fight, or they, you know, you know, passing licks or those kind of things. And those things are coded differently. So this year, that report was pulled, the last pull, um, was after August 22nd. So it hasn't been, um, verified or certified by the state board yet because Amy Moment, who is the section chief, has to pull everything together. Now that we have others, all systems on Infinite Campus, we were able to get out a lot of the kinks and the bugs with regard to the data and how it was reporting because a lot of our data was reporting incorrectly. And so our principals and data managers had to go in and make those corrections. The beauty of us doing it in Infinite Campus is that we can make those corrections versus it being third-party, being pulled over. Because if what some were doing, they were correcting it in Educator's Handbook, well, it only get pulled one time. So when it's downloaded, you changed it over here, but it didn't get changed in the reporting system. So now that we're, we're, uh, making those corrections in the reporting system, whenever our data get pulled, and we haven't had a pull for this school year because again, last year's data hasn't been verified.
Any other comments or questions related to that? Yes, Ms. Stacy?
So thank you for that clarification, Dr. Monroe. I would just ask though, that, uh, for the benefit of the public, that we attach this, uh, to the agenda, this data that we've reviewed, so that it's available to the public if they want to review it.
And again, that data is, uh, is not the
Not finalized.
And it's not the, the data from the last pull on August 15th. So that, um, again, I probably would encourage you to allow us to, uh, use or create that using the last pull data that, that is, was being submitted to the state or, or wait until we get that last one because there were some corrections that schools were making from August 15th until August 27th, 22nd, when that was supposed to be. Because again, that may be a misrepresentation of what, some corrections that schools went, no, we changed that. It should have been this versus.
Okay. So this is not a finalized version, is what you're telling me, which is fine.
And it's, and it's not a, it's not a, uh, comprehensive, uh, copy of, or the data that was drawn down by the state at the last draw.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Comments or questions? Okay. Thank you very much, Dr. Monroe and Dr. Boutwell. At this time, I would entertain a motion to enter into closed session, pursue it to North Carolina General Statute, excuse me, 143, 31811, A3, A6, and A8, to consult with an attorney in order to protect the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body and to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, or condition of appointment of a public officer or employee, or prospective public officer or employee, and to formulate and adopt the school's safety components of school improvement plans. So move. Okay. Thank you. I have a first and a second to go into closed session. All in favor, please signify by the raising of your right hand. That is everyone. And the board is in closed. And the board is in closed session.
The board is back in open session. We did take action in closed session to approve the school safety plans. And those were accepted unanimously by the board members present. And at this time, I would like to, I would entertain a motion to accept the bridged in property proposal. Excuse me.
Motion.
As, as the resolution was accepted by the, the prior resolution was accepted by the board. I have a motion from Ms. Mason to do that. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Ms. Dacey. Is there any discussion? Hearing non. Mr. Schnau, would you please take a roll call vote?
Ms. Jennifer Dacey.
Yes.
Ms. Amy Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Arlene Gibbs.
Yes.
Mr. Lee Kirkman.
Yes.
Ms. Patty Mason.
Yes.
Ms. Lori Spees.
Yes, thank you. And at this time, I would ask Dr. Boone to give us a presentation of the HR report for this month.
All right. Good afternoon, board members. Prior to the meeting, I presented you all with a copy of Human Resources Division Report Four for the month of October 2025. I'm requesting that the board approve Human Resources Report Number Four.
So move. I have a motion from Ms. Mason to accept the HR report as presented.
Second.
And I have a second from Ms. Davis. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dacey, did you have?
Yeah, I did have just another point of clarification for Dr. Boone. Obviously, we're always sad to see teachers go, and I know they come and go. But you did summarize the vacancies for licensed teachers for us this year versus last year. So we've still got forty-one vacancies at this point.
Yes, ma'am.
I would gather, and then we had at the same time last year fifty-eight, but of course, we have fewer total positions. I can't really do the math, but it's not really an apples to apples comparison, right? Because we've had some attrition, but.
Is there any other discussion on the HR report? Okay. And I had a motion to accept it, and a second from Ms. Davis. Doc, Mr. Schnout, would you please take a roll call vote?
Ms. Jennifer Dacey.
Yes.
Ms. Amy Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Arlene Gibbs.
Yes.
Mr. Lee Kirkman.
Yes.
Ms. Patty Mason.
Yes.
Ms. Lori Spees.
Yes.
Thank you, board.
Thank you. At this time, I would turn it over to my fellow board members to give comments. We'll start with Ms. Arlene Gibbs.
Thank you, manager. I have a issue to discuss that I would like to bring forward to the, for the benefit of the public. It's been brought to my attention that some people in our staff have been, or volunteers maybe, have been told that decisions regarding different instances were, the Board of Education made a decision so that, you know, that whatever case it was going to be for them. And I just want to let the public know, everything this board does is an open book. You can watch any video, YouTube that we've met on, any minutes are out there for the public to read. And I just asked Mr. Schnout if you would ask your staff to please own their decisions and not say, well, the board made a decision when we haven't. And on a positive note, I was invited to go to the Fields of Faith at Croatan High School, and it was a marvelous service. It was nice to see county lines blurred, so we could cross over county lines and do something with the other schools. And I'd like to encourage anyone to do, have one of those events in our county. So, thank you.
Okay, thanks. So I just want to thank all the members of the public who came out to my monthly office hours yesterday. It was a holiday, so I think we had a few extra people that we might not otherwise have. Sometimes hope that we'll get some teachers on those days, but it was standing room only, so lots of questions. And I appreciate everybody's input who was there. And then I will be serving lunch Friday at Bangert, and hope they have had a great grandparents' day over there today. Sorry that I could not be there. So, that's all.
Ms. Mason?
I'd like to say two things. One, Craven County Concerts is a wonderful program that's offered, and they give back to the school system in a couple of ways. And Jennifer, I might ask for your help on this. They give grants to the school system, is my understanding. And then the other thing they do is they'll buy equipment and repair it and give it to the school, so the school can loan it out to those wanting to pursue music as a part of their curriculum. And this is a wonderful thing. Music is a form of communication that everybody needs to learn. And, you know, it's surprisingly enough, if you're good at music, we could encourage kids to be good at math, because both have patterns, and it's a way of encouraging across, you know, coordination between methods of communicating. And that was, good word, solid. I hope you understood it. Anyway, Craven Concerts is a good community, that, good community effort that gives back to the school, and I'd like to give them recognition. Mr. Hill had talked to Ms. Spees and I beforehand, and I thought he was going to do it during his public input, but for some reason, he did not. So as his district rep, I'm giving that input. And I'll be serving lunch at James W. Smith on Friday.
Davis?
I just have a few announcements. New Bern High School Bear's PTO is doing a fundraiser tonight at Moore's Barbecue from five to eight. So if you do not want to cook, you could go there. Ten percent of that, of sales goes to New Bern High School. Also, Brentson PTA is doing one tonight as well at Panera from four to eight, and twenty-five percent of those sales go to the PTA. This Saturday, New Bern High School is taking donations, gently used donations for their bear closet from ten AM to noon. So if you have anything that, I know we all have clothes in our closet we don't wear, there's a lot that they do need for some kids in need, so they can go to our closet. And then, another thing, West Craven Middle School football is undefeated, and so is Pamela Gay. And so they are playing tomorrow for the conference championship at West Craven High School at six. So I would like, you know, if you don't have anything to do, that's really exciting for them to, to be undefeated. So that will be a good game. And then Grover plays HJ, the big revival every year, for the pumpkin bowl, and that is also tomorrow at six at New Bern High School.
Thank you. Mr. Kirkman?
I'd just like to thank the folks at Roger Bell for the invitation to visit their classrooms and see some things they were doing with technology and using their iPads in class. And those kids did an amazing job with their presentations and the work they were doing. And also thanks to the folks at Havelock High School for opening their doors and a chance to see some things going on in their classrooms as well.
And I would like to, I mean, there's great things going on in our schools. I'm glad to hear some of our board members will be serving lunch this week. I haven't been given my assignment yet, because I said I have three elementary schools within one mile of my, my house, and I'll go wherever you need me. So, but I also plan to be serving lunch on Friday. And I do want to, I know earlier we recognized the principal of the year finalist, and that is great work by all of them, but I would take this opportunity because Dr. Renika Wallace teaches at a school in my district, and so I congratulate her for, for that, for, for being the finalist for the elementary school principals of the year. The other ones do great work too, but since I'm giving district-specific stuff, I'd like to give Dr. Wallace a shout-out for that. And again, I, I think the board heard all the, the conversation about the two-by-twos that are occurring. We may or may not adjust that depending on the feedback from the board, but we did hear it. I just want to clarify that those two-by-two meetings are absolutely legal. Like, our legal counsel has been consulted before we ever held the first one. So there's nothing not legal and really not transparent, because any information that we discuss in there are things that the public might regularly ask us about. So I do just want to make that point. There's nothing else today. I would entertain a motion to adjourn the work session.
Motion.
I have a motion from Ms. Mason. Do I have a second?